Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone, really glad you're here today.
We also have Colin here from our team. What's up Colin? Good to have you here.
How are you doing everybody?
So today we are talking, excuse me about, excuse me about having evergreen events. So what it looks like for you to be able to host evergreen events and kind of what that means. If you don't know what an evergreen event is, you're going to learn about that. And very specifically, we're going to talk about a feature in Get Oiling that's going to allow you to create one resource and use it forever for the same event. So that's something that we have done for you. I'll be getting into that resource here on the call as well. We've got some slides to get into. We're going to do some demoing. We're going to take Q and As. A lot to get into today on the call. So we're going to go ahead and pop out a video and get into these slides that we've prepared for you. Welcome again. We're so thrilled to have you. This is a live call that we host every Thursday at noon US Eastern Time. This is an opportunity for you as a young living brand partner, Get Oiling user and person who is wanting to work smarter, not harder, to get together, learn more about how you can use this system that has everything that you need to promote and grow as a brand partner, all under one roof. So this is a free service that we offer to this community. And we are just so thrilled that you are choosing to spend some of your time with us. If you're watching us on YouTube with our replays, I hope you'll come and join us on a live call. So today we're talking about evergreen events, specifically how we're going to use a new feature using our field tags in Get Oiling in order to get that done. And we're going to talk about how we can use those field tags to create evergreen funnels for recurring live events, workshops, webinars, and whatever other kind of recurring thing you might like to create, right? So these are classes, if they're workshops, if they're make and takes, if they're on Zoom, or even if they're in person, you've got a way to do all of this with one account with Get Oiling. And as promised, I also have some resources to get you started. I did send those out via email. Our team will be able to share that link in the chat as well, but we're going to get to that here at the close of our training here. And then as always, we do have our live help and Q and A. So if you do have questions, if you came here looking for help and support, even if it has nothing to do with today's subject matter, it doesn't matter. We are here for you regardless. So go ahead and add those questions to the Q and A so that we can take care of you here on this call. This is a live work session for us to work together on whatever it is that you may be stuck on or need a little support with. Now, if you're watching this as a replay, you'd like to get that benefit by joining us. You can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession to join us on one of these live Thursday calls on Zoom. And if you'd like to work together, one on a call like this one, we set aside the second half of these calls to do just that. So if you want to have one-on-one focused time on something you would like to work on, you can do that on this call. And what you have done is for the benefit, not only for yourself, but for the whole community to be able to see kind of what's working and get feedback. So definitely recommend you take advantage of that. That's getoiling.com/website review. And if you would like for someone to do some of the work for you, that is also an option that is available. Getoiling.com/conceivers is where you want to go. If you'd like for someone to set things up in your system, maybe create websites, funnels, et cetera, for you, get your branding in place, whatever that looks like. Our team is here to help. Alright, so let me know in the chat. Head over into the chat. Where are you guys coming in from? Would love to see who's here today. And specifically, do you host recurring events? So do you have a weekly team call? Or do you do a weekly or bi-weekly info session? What does that look like for you? Do you host place like in person or do you host on Zoom? What does, what does that look like for you? And if you're interested in doing it, what are you interested in creating? Maybe you don't have it in place yet, but you will by the close of today. Awesome. Thank you guys for chiming in here. Not doing it yet, but you'd like to. And, and yes, you have recurring events. Awesome. You are going to, Christina, you're going to love this because we're going to save you tons of time if you are already hosting weekly events. Alright, so having a regular live event, if you aren't doing this yet, I really want to encourage you to consider putting a regular live event into the work that you do as a brand partner. Because it is one of the most important things you can have in your back pocket to get leads exposed to Young Living, right? And to build trust, right? It's one of the most powerful tools that's available to you to build trust and share Young Living, right? You can make videos and that's fine. You can have one-on-ones with people and that's also fine. But having an event where there are multiple people there provides social proof in a way that you just don't get in all of the other methods available for you to show and tell. So definitely consider adding recurring live events to the way that you grow. It'll do a lot for you. So when you think about creating recurring live events, you don't have to worry about going and getting anything new. You have everything that you need with Get Oiling. And now you can save even more time with the recurring events that you offer by using a feature that you might already be a little bit familiar with in Get Oiling. And that feature is called Field Tags. Now, if you've ever put contact first name in brackets with these underscores in an email, you are already using field tags in Get Oiling. Alright, how many of you do this? Maybe you use that like, hey, contact first name when you're sending out an email or a text so that it's personalized to the person that you are communicating with, right? So yes, you use it all the time. Excellent. So there's a lot of tags, these field tags that you can use in your emails and also interestingly on your pages in your funnels. So you can use your name, your email address, right? So like on a, on a confirmation page where you want to tell someone to add your email to their address book, right? You can put my underscore email inside of brackets and it will show your email address without you having to type it in. It's pretty cool, right? So there are all of these personalization tags. Where you're going to find these is if you're composing a message. So this would be a broadcast message or a campaign message. It's this little chat bubble right next to it. So it's between saved replies and automations. You click that and there is a dropdown list here of field tags that you can use. But here's what's really cool and new to Get Oiling that's going to save you tons of time. We now have Bates Field Tags. Okay, so this means that no matter when a message is sent, if you have the today's date tag, it is going to give today's calendar date, whether that's today, tomorrow, or two years from now. You can now use that tag, right? Or if it is maybe a Wednesday recurring event, then it's always going to show the upcoming Wednesday's date if you use the next Wednesday tag. Guys, this is so cool. So if you want to host a Zoom call every Wednesday at 7:00 PM, then you can on your landing page, and this is really cool because you don't have to go create a brand new event or a brand new page or edit a page every week to keep this up to date. You can have, if you look over here in the left hand in the editor view, so we have the, the details for this call. So the when I put next underscore Wednesday inside of brackets. So that's a date field tag for next Wednesday and the time, and then it's going to be live on Zoom. Now that's the editor view. And if you look at it on the published page, it's showing, and this is as of right now, it's October 10th, 2024. So next Wednesday is the 16th. So that's automatically going to populate that. So if it is October 16th, when they see this page and you want to register them for next week, it's going to show the next Wednesday, right? So this is evergreen, meaning you never have to change it. It always stays relevant. But let's take this a step further. You can use contact information in your field tags as well. So on the left-hand side of your page here, I want to show you is here's our landing page form. And by the way, I've created these resources for you. We're going to go over them here in just a bit. But right here, you have the landing page forum. I've put in my name. I've put in my email address and I clicked save my seat now and it's taking me to a confirmation page. Now you see the top here, this is the editor view and you'll see four different field tags that I'm using. So I've got the contact first name tag. I've got the contact email tag because I'm telling them what email address I just sent their registration information to. And I'm also telling them to put my email address into their contacts. So I've used the my email tag. And then of course, I am including or reiterating here the date of the workshop that they registered for because I am offering this weekly, but this is going to show the date that they registered for. And so that's next Wednesday. And, and so of course, on the confirmation page, you can see down here at the bottom, the published version. It has the name that registered, the email address that registered, my email, and then of course, the actual upcoming date. Did you guys know that you can use contact information field tags on pages? This is so stinking cool. Now here's an important note. If you want to use someone's, you know, like a contact first name or their email on a page like this, it needs to be something like the page that you're sending them to that has these personalization tags. It needs to be a page that is maybe a confirmation page that they go to immediately after they opt in. Or perhaps inside of the member area where they have logged in or a page that they have clicked a link to view from their email or text, right? So if this is just a page that lives on your website that's publicly discoverable, these tags might not work because the contact information needs to correlate to that person that's visiting. And if they're not in your contact manager or they have not visited your website recently, then they're not going to see this information, right? So just be mindful when you are using these tags that they need to be used in a couple of specific instances. Otherwise, you might not get what you're looking for out of them. Confirmation pages are a phenomenal place to do this. Alright. You can, of course, as you are probably already familiar, use those contact tags and those date tags in your campaign message as well. So here is the message that we're sending out to let them know that their seat is saved, telling them, you know, hello, their first name. I'm excited to see you on Wednesday. And I did put Wednesday in here because this will always be a Wednesday call, right? And then of course, we've got that next Wednesday tag, which of course shows up the relevant next Wednesday date. Alright, so our resources, this, this was sent to you via email. Team, if we could pop this into the chat pretty please, link to this just in case you guys need it. We've created a funnel for you to use to get started with this, right? And this is going to allow you to promote a live weekly event. This could be a workshop as I've named it here. It could be a webinar. It could be a class. Whatever it is, however you'd like to categorize it, you could obviously edit these to your heart's content. But essentially what we have here are a landing page where they'll register, right? So we've got the date information, what's going to be happening on the call or at the event, right? We have the confirmation page, that personalized one that they'll see after they opt in. And then a single message campaign that's going to right away, so that's day zero message, send them information about their registration and reiterating the details from that registration page. Alright, so let's go take a look at these resources and get started with creating our recurring live events. Alright, so we have here, this is the resource bundle. I'm going to claim it. And then we're going to get to it to work. So let's go take a look at our registration page or our landing page for this event. Here we have, and it is going to automatically go to your, the fonts that you have selected in your system. If you want to use some of the images that are in here and modify them, I do have the, the Canva file up here at the top, if you'd like to use those and, and kind of make them your own. So here, of course, you want to share information about this thing that you're doing. And this importantly, because we want this to be evergreen, this needs to be something that pertains to every instance, right? This is a recurring event and every instance of it is going to basically be the same. So I'll give an example. So maybe this is, maybe this is a weekly call where you are sharing insights into wellness secrets for women experiencing the change, right? And so you can say on this page that our topics might vary slightly week to week, but it's always going to help you with X, Y, and Z things, right? So you may be talking about, you know, if we're talking about women experiencing the change, we may be talking about how to keep cool and sleep through the night. We could talk about balancing hormones and intermittent fasting, right? Like there are lots of topics that you can cover. So you would want to come up with like an umbrella. Because again, we don't want to change this every week, right? So give it a name that's relevant every week. Talk about the compelling benefits that any instance of this will provide and any of other, any other supplemental details that'll help them decide that this is for them. Then of course, you want your call to action. Save your seat. Put the name. We're just reiterating what's up here. You're going to select next Wednesday or if this is going to be on Mondays, change this to Monday, Tuesday, Saturday, et cetera, and your time. And of course, if this is on Zoom, then you can include this here. You can say, if this is going to be local, you can say location will be sent via email if you don't want to publish that, right? So that is something that you can do there. I've got the form right here. It's actually going to appear on the page. Let's go ahead and take a quick look at the rest of the page here. This is again, an opportunity for you to really sell this thing, right? So tell them about what they'll get from showing up. Share a little bit about you. And share some testimonials, which if you tuned into one of our recent episodes, then you know a little bit about how to get those as well. You can add a Q and A here or you can delete these. And then of course, we've got our final call to action here at the bottom. So let's go take a look at the form. I'll show you what this looks like as a published page before we move ahead. So this is what it looks like published, right? So this will have all of your information. They put in their name and email to save their seat. And then of course, you've got all of the rest of the page. We want to edit that form and how this works, you can, or anything on the page, you can make those modifications here. So if it's not a workshop, you definitely want to change it, absolutely change this title bar text and, and change the link path here as well, so that these show up in a relevant way to your leads. This is selected to be shown by link only. You could have this available everywhere, absolutely, if you want to. I do not have header and footer selected here because this is really a landing page. A landing page or a squeeze page is where we really want to remove all options except the decision we want them to make, which in this case is to sign up for your calls. So we're not going to send them anywhere else and we're not going to give them any links to go anywhere other than to fill out the form on this page. Alright, so no header, no footer. You can obviously set up a sharing image and description. If you're only sharing by link only, you don't have to worry about a meta description here. Sharing image and description, these are going to be helpful for you if you're going to maybe be posting this on Facebook or if you're going to maybe send this link as a text. These are going to be very helpful to have filled out as well. So under leads, we don't have anything in the capture form except, here we go. It says, enter your details below to save your seat. Now you can't see this because it's set to be white. You can actually see here because it's showing up on this green background. That's actually in the form settings here, that lead capture message. So if you aren't say using that green background or you want a different color font, just know that this is here. It's just, you can't see it because I've turned it white. Alright, we are not using a capture headline. We are using a button label. You can change the color here of that button. And then finally, we can come down here and modify anything else. So if you, if you want to make sure you're getting a phone number, for instance, you can select the phone field label and make it a required field. Those are options there for you. And then after a lead registers, I've already got this set up for you, but here's an important thing that you want to do before you move forward here. So the Evergreen Workshop Registration Campaign is already attached. You don't have to change that and you don't have to change this confirmation page. You do absolutely need to go ahead and set up a tag. Now this is going to be a tag that you use for anyone who signs up for this in perpetuity, right? So this might be workshop lead, right? So these are workshops. I host a workshop every Wednesday at 7:00 PM Eastern. Everyone who opts into this is a workshop lead. Okay? Now, depending on how you use this recurring live event, you may want to attach an automation here. So as an example, you may wish to add a follow-up plan to an automation and add it here because you want to personally be reminded to follow up one-on-one with anyone who registered to attend one of these workshops, right? And you may want to have in that follow-up plan, a reminder to email them, look them up on social, give them a call. And then, you know, maybe to change their lead status or whatever that looks like, right? So consider adding an automation here depending on what you're going to do with these leads who register. And absolutely 100%, please add a tag because if you're going to send a reminder, for instance, before you go live, you want to be able to find the people that registered for this, right? So make sure that you have a tag here that you'll use for anyone who registers on this landing page. Alright, so I'm going to go ahead and save that. And let's go work on our confirmation page. Alright, so here we have our contact first name. Good to go. I'll go ahead and show you the settings here as well. Definitely make sure that you change the name of this. Again, this is, and this is actually confirmation page. But this needs to be changed. This needs to be, see you soon, right? Because this is what they'll actually see, like you see Get Oiling up here in the top tab or Claim a Resource Bundle. This goes there. So make sure that you change this. And this might be, this is actually fine. You can keep this. Again, here, link only, no header, no footer and no lead form here because all we're doing is letting them know that we're registered, right? And check your email and add my email, right? So here, just like we do on a land, sorry, a landing page, a squeeze page, we want them to do one thing and one thing only. And that is to check their email and add your email address to their contacts, right? So we want to give them again, no other options, no rabbit holes to fall into. Go check your email now. Add my email address to it. So that's the point of what's here. And of course, we are reiterating. So make sure that you change that name of your workshop right here. We're just reiterating the details that we shared on the previous page, right? Simple enough. Now, before we go and address our campaign, one thing that you are going to want to do, if this is a recurring event on Zoom, is you're going to want to come down to your Zoom meetings. And we can schedule a meeting. Here, I'm going to make this recurring and this is going to be my weekly Wednesday workshop. Got a level of an alliterative title and I'm going to create that meeting. I'm going to copy the link for people to join. So that's right here, copy link. And now I'm going to go edit that campaign because the campaign is how we are going to send them an email, right? To confirm that their seat is saved and also to go ahead and just give them the link to the call, right? So here, we would actually click here and say Zoom. Click here to join or save link. And I will insert a link here. That's that one that I just created. And now that's there and good to go. And you can see here, again, we've got that personalization field tag of the contact's name and we have the date field tag here, which again, you may want to modify because if yours is on a Sunday, you need to say Sunday here and say next Sunday here, right? I've given you some prompts here. So say a little bit more about why they should be excited. Just that the fact that they're registered doesn't mean that they're going to show up, make this compelling. You can say something like, feel free to hit reply and let me know if you have questions. Feel free to bring friends, right? And then of course, let them know you're going to send them a reminder an hour before you go live, right? And Christina, if you wanted to use a recurring calendar link, if this is a series of calls that someone is opting into in perpetuity, then you could absolutely use that link that Greg put into the chat here. That's this, we've talked about this briefly on other calls before. This is a free tool called iCal Marudot. And if you follow the instructions here, you can actually create a recurring calendar event that they could click and add to their iCal or other, other calendar software that they might use. So their digital calendar, you might be able to add that. I would put that in an email like this one as well. Alright, so let's finish up here. We've got this email created. We'll save this message. And now what we want to do is, and let me actually go over to this registration page. I'm going to opt into this page and I'll show you how it works. And then I'll show you what it looks like to actually go and send the reminder email to the people that are going to be joining that week, right? So I'm going to put in my name. I'm going to put in my email address. Save my seat. And so there we go. It's got my personalized tag here, the email address and all of that, right? So if I go and I check my email, it's going to show me that I am registered. Now, when it's time to, to connect with, with those people and let them know that it is time to join the call, let's go double check what our tag was that we set up here. Workshop lead is the tag. So I'm going to go over here to my dashboard. And I'm going to send a message to one or more of my contacts, right? So I'm going to send one message. I'm going to filter for that workshop lead tag. I'm going to write my email. So I've got one person who's registered. I'm going to schedule that because this is going to be next Wednesday at 7:00. I'm going to send that at 6:00 Eastern and I'm going to say, see name of workshop. We're live in an hour. Will I see you there? Right? And then you say whatever you want to say here. And then you also want to again grab that link. Here's the link to join our live call, right? And you could also, and I highly recommend this, go ahead and create a saved reply for yourself that has all of this information. So the, the subject line and the body of the, of the email here, including that Zoom link, so that you don't have to recreate this every time you need to use it, right? So I'm going to put in, join now. Right? So make a saved reply so that you can just drag it, like just copy it from right in here and pop it right in. That will save you a ton of time. So we're live in an hour. Okay. And so here we would be good to go. We can schedule that to send out an hour before. And of course, you can do this week over week over week. That is the one not fully automated thing that you can do. But of course, if you create a saved reply that does what I just showed you, then this whole prospect of getting started and, and you know, having this set up is something that's really just going to take you about two minutes a week outside of actually hopping onto your live call or showing up in person or wherever it is you are offering this, this event. Alright, let's see. Carrie Gale, how do you add a picture to a click button example? Click here for the recipe. So Carrie Gale, do you mean maybe on a page, you want someone to click an image and then that image takes them somewhere? Maybe let me know in the chat if that's what you mean by that. And I could definitely go show you. Let's see, Jolene, can you share how you would add the email, add to the email campaign a reminder message on the day before and a day of the event? So to keep this evergreen, Jolene, we are actually not adding those messages to the campaign itself because the campaign is not date-based. This is one that you can literally set this one thing up. And so for the registration and the notification forever, you just have this one thing and it's good to go. And once a week, or even you could do this once a month or once a quarter, is you go in and you just schedule those broadcasts to go out to that filtered audience set, right? That's what keeps it evergreen. The basic resource is an evergreen one. If you have a weekly Wednesday call forever, that weekly Wednesday call is going to be, you go to this page. It sends you to this confirmation page. It sends you this email. And then all you have to do is schedule ahead of time, that reminder, you know, day before, after, what have you, right? So there are things that you could create, I suppose. Well, no, I would, I would just use saved replies. It's, it's not really a very lengthy prospect of sending that stuff out. Okay, Carrie Gale says, if you go to my website, I have a button for people to click here for a detox bath recipe, but the button doesn't work. Okay, okay. So tell you what, we absolutely have time to go and take a look at this together. So if you would like, definitely let me know. Oh, you've got your hand up. Alright, I am bringing you out to talk. And let's, let's go take a look at what's going on on your website. Definitely let me know. Oh, you got your hand up. All right. I am bringing you out to talk and let's, let's go take a look at what's going on on your website.
Hi, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
So a lot of people have mentioned it, and I just thought it'd be easy for me to go in and add my picture of the detox bath, but it's not working. I'm not sure. Really how to, it's different because usually the buttons you're just putting in a link.
Sure. So is this at your homepage?
No, it's. It's the page where it says work with me and services.
Okay. All right. Let me. Get over to that page and I will share here in just a moment. Okay, so it's a work with me page. Okay. Is it titled services or?
It's if you go under services. Yeah. So when you're looking here. I think it's on the next page.
Okay.
There's two pages that say there are services.
This is the one?
I think so, yes. Yeah. And so right at the bottom.
Okay.
Right here.
I see. Okay. Yeah. So you can actually see, I don't know if you can see to the very bottom left of my screen here, there is a, there's a hashtag. Linked in this button, but there's nothing else there. So that's the the issue is in this, here we go. This button, if we edit link, it just has a hashtag in it. So this recipe, where where does it exist on your website?
It's. It, sorry, it's not on the website. It's, so I have it on my computer. Okay. So I'm, I don't know how you would put a picture into that.
Okay, so here's what we could do. So if you take that, are you able to, if you're. If you're using a computer right now, what I would do is upload that image to your content library. Right? So go right over here to images under content library. And upload that image. Unless you already have it in here. Do you think you have it in here?
I don't know, because there was someone from get oiling that was helping me do this.
Got you. Okay. Yeah. So what I would do is, is if you're on your computer and you and you have access to that file, go ahead and upload that to the image library. And then what we'll do is we'll send that out to them via email. So that will be a campaign that goes out. Right? So when they ask for their free recipe, are you using the lead form on this page at all? You're not. All right. So we're going to say.
Not on this page.
All right. So enter your information below and I'll send you copy. Of my recipe. All right. And this will be. You can obviously change this. So send it to me. And then we want to send them to a campaign and a confirmation page. This is a purchase confirmation page. Let me see. We'll go ahead and use this confirmation page here. This will be. A, here we go, free recipe detox bath recipe. Here we go, detox bath lead. Perfect. Okay. And then we will add a new campaign here. All right. So this will be, you don't have one already, right?
No.
Okay. All right. We'll create the campaign. And so here in this message, we will. Say, here's your detox bath recipe, and then we'll put in that contact first name tag, right? And we can do that again down here. Here's the recipe you asked for. I hope it helps you. Feel free to hit reply. And ask any questions. You might have, right? And then what we'll do is. We're just going to pop the image of it right in here, right? So you can actually. Go to your device to find your your image, or if you've added it to your image library. And right now I'm just going to go ahead and I'll just pop this in here. Which of course you want to replace this with the actual image, right? Because you said this, the recipe is an image format, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So I'm going to change the alternative text here and we'll say. Detox bath recipe. All right, great. And then, of course, you sign off. So we'll go to save this message. And now we'll go back here. And let me just go ahead and save what we've done. And refresh the page because I want to add that new campaign to the bottom. So under leads, after they register, we want to send them. Detox bath. Oh, you you do have a campaign. Okay, let's, we should, let's go see. All right. But the final thing that I would do here, because this is going to be a pop up, is right here, we need to have lead. Right? Because now if we we test this out. We go down here to the bottom. Now that this says lead in the in the field, we click it. Okay, we need to change that. I think this might have been a duplicate of something else, or like what what are you, are you selling something?
I had it before, but.
Are you, are you selling anything on this page? It looks like you do have. Payments set up here.
No, I took my payment away, my Stripe. Because they were charging way too much money in Canada.
Okay, okay. Totally fine. So I think I've just fixed that. So let's, let's go take a look at that again, and it should work the way that we want it to. All right. So get your free recipe. Here we go. Into your information, I'll send you a copy of my recipe. They put in their name, their email. And then it'll send them to a confirmation page. Not a hundred percent sure what you're using for that, but let's go look. If it's a basic one. Then it should be fine. Yes. This is great. Perfect. Don't have to change that. And then let's go check out the campaign. It looks like maybe Pam or someone else was working with you. That might already be set up. So I don't want to replicate things in your system that you don't need. So this looks like was already created. Oh, there you go. No, that's. I love it. Fantastic. So this is the one that you want to use. Let's delete the one that I just quickly created. And make sure that that is connected to that page and from there you should be good to go. I want to delete this campaign. So I'm going to go to edit. Delete. There we go. Okay. So going back to that services page, I think once we. Change that campaign here, you're good to go. So that's in our lead settings. What to do after they register. Sorry, this is detox. Bath lead magnet. There we go. All right. So now. When someone scrolls down here to the bottom. And they click here. Wait, did I not save those changes? Okay. All right, let's try this one more time. Hashtag lead update done. All right, it's a pop up. There are no payments. Detox bath lead confirmation page detox bath lead magnet. All right, now we're good to go. So now it should work. When someone clicks here, the form is going to pop up. They add their information. And it will send them to the confirmation page that you have. And it will send that email right away that you worked with someone on our team to create, and it has a link for them to actually download the image. And it actually displays the image as well. So that that's functional now.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely. I love it when we can solve a problem on a call like this. All right. Anyone else have something that you want to work on? Is there something that you're stuck on? Or do you have some ideas perhaps for a recurring event and you want to figure out how you can host that type of event? The way that you want it with get oiling. If you have any questions about that, we have space here. If you'd like a review, whether it be of a part of your website or strategy. Or just getting started with us, I welcome you. You could pop your hand up or you could let us know in the chat or in the Q and A. And and we'll bring you out to talk and we could work through whatever you would like to work on. One other thing that I would recommend as well, if you are someone who likes to use the events feature in get oiling, if that's something that you are already currently using. Bear with me just a moment. Actually, I need to not be in that active share to do this. You can still use the events feature in get oiling. You would need to create those recurring instances. For that call. So you would need to be, you know, basically maybe once every few months, you would be like scheduling those events. But then you would be sending them to that landing page that we created. All right, let me. Get back into sharing here. So basically what you would do is finding the link there to that workshop registration page. Here we go, evergreen workshop registration. So I'm going to copy this link. And if I'm going to be actually creating an event that shows up on, you know, your website dot com slash events. Then what we could do is, let's see, this is the weekly Wednesday. Workshops and I'll do the same thing every time for this, right? So I'm going to use a similar description to what might be on the page. So. Let's see. So this will be join us to learn how to. Support. Family wellness. Topics like. Right? And then you add all of that. This is going to be. Wednesday. I'm going to. Send them, let me see, more event options. Here we go. We're not going to allow self-registration. We're going to send them to this page. So the event link, right? So I'm going to go ahead and create this event. And then if we go and we view it. Then you can see, obviously, if you put an image in here, that would be ideal. And any of the information that you shared here will be here, but then when they click, they're not actually RSVPing here. They are going to sign up on that evergreen page here. Right? So then you could just simply go back and create more of these events. And so basically what I would do here is maybe find that one that I just created and then duplicate it, right? Make a bunch of duplicates of it, adjust the dates for every Wednesday for the next, you know, three months, or however you'd like to set that up. And and then you could actually have these listed in your event listings as well. All right. Anybody else have questions or want to look through anything together? Glad we were able to go through that as quickly as we did today. And of course, you know, if you guys are looking for help, we are here to help for the next little bit. Otherwise. We will get going. All right. Paula says, I'm brainstorming away. I might offer my weekly podcast with this evergreen setting. Okay. For you out to chat. Let's figure this out. Hey Paula, so are you going to be, are you going to be live recording your podcast on Zoom?
Um, I was thinking about maybe doing that. I haven't really decided. I mean, what I'm doing right now is I'm recording it and then uploading it to. To a podcast platform. But I'm thinking possibly I could do a zoom. And just connect them all together and invite people into a live to where they could actually, we could have a conversation.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. So you're you're kind of, it's like a two birds, one stone proposition there, or maybe like. Seven birds, one stone, honestly, because you've got the live interaction potential there, but it's also fodder for recorded content. So. Yeah, absolutely. It would be obviously separate from your podcast release date, but but depending on how you want to set the podcast up. If you want to take, you know, listener questions, if you want to have a co-host with you, or if you want to have like a live Q and A. For that hour, so people could join live, or if they want the replay, they would need to subscribe. Excuse me, to get the podcast feed. See, that's definitely something you could do, and you would be able to use this to promote the live version, like the live recording. And then, of course, you would have a separate broadcast that you send out for the subscribers who just want to get the the recording only.
So we could do like a Q and A on the upcoming podcast or something like that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Or. I'm wondering, I guess I could actually play the podcast on the Zoom call and then have the the live Q and A after that. I mean, I could pull it up. I could share my screen and pull it up.
You could.
It's only like a five or six minute, but you know, it's a very short podcast.
Got you.
Five, six minutes.
Oh, well, then maybe. So, okay, a couple of things. If you are on a live call and you're playing a recording, aside from maybe like just using a clip. It does kind of take something away from the live experience. So.
Okay.
What you could do, since you're actually referring to, you know, five, seven minute clips. Basically, this gives you the opportunity to release two types of content, right? So you're releasing your five to seven minute clip that's pre-recorded. It's a simple thing that people can go and listen to. And then maybe later in the week, you've got this live discussion, right? So maybe you're you're sharing. You're sharing thoughts or you're sharing what that that base content is, right? And then you're having a conversation about the content, perhaps later in the week on a recurring live call. And so that way you've got content that references each other, and that's actually going to be a lot more powerful for you and your content. Than replaying the content in another format, right? Because if you could, if you could imagine you're listening to a podcast. And the context that's being presented for whatever it is that you're talking about is on another episode. That means you get more listens because those people are going to go find that if they haven't already, right? So you're always able to, you're able to reference more of the content and you're actually creating more of it, which the platforms really love. They love fresh content because they want more people coming back and consuming it.
Okay, all right. That sounds great. Thanks.
I love that idea. It's a great way to build community too. And I think with the the list that you've built, that provides a really compelling way to engage. For sure.
Yes. And from last week, I have a lot of people tagged with the general mailing list tag now. So I'll be sending that out every week.
Excellent, excellent. Yeah. It's powerful like to to really kind of laser into different subsets of your bigger list. Because it's it's more valuable for you to have a smaller, highly engaged group than it is to have a whole bunch of people who aren't paying attention. And so you can create little pockets of that with this, which, you know, with your podcast, your general mailing list, and maybe the people who. Subscribe to these opportunities to come together in community on a weekly basis. Yeah, I think that's a really great idea.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure thing. All right, Cornelia. So you don't remove the workshop lead tag. But send your weekly reminder to everybody with the workshop lead tag. So this is a little bit more. So what you're describing, this is an important thing to consider, depending on what the nature of the weekly call is or the weekly event is that you're offering. So for those of you who are offering a one-time registration for the thing in perpetuity. Right? So like our weekly work sessions, you sign up for our weekly work sessions, and we will send you a reminder every week for the live call. You could use a setup like this where you don't remove that tag for team calls or, you know. This is a weekly workshop series that I offer on Wednesdays at seven PM. And when you sign up, you're going to be able to join all of them in the future. In that case, you would never remove the workshop lead tag, right? Or if this is a teen call tag, or however it is that you set that up. Now, when I was showing you how to set up the registration page, one of the things that I mentioned was the addition of an automation. Based on how you plan to use this as a funnel for your business, right? So if this is something that's simply going to be nurturing a set of your leads, there is not anything specific. So if this is something that's simply going to be nurturing a set of your leads, there is not anything specifically actionable that follows it. Um, you can just keep that tag on and keep inviting people back, right? This is a great opportunity to build community, like we were discussing with Paula. Or to, you know, again, just have a weekly resource that you can point people to, if they wanna learn more about how to use oils, or whatever your sort of oily angle is. Uh, with um, with the natural or wellness world, right? If you wanted to use something like this as a weekly sales webinar. However, you would want to take in a couple of additional considerations. And very specifically, utilize an automation to remove that workshop lead tag. So if your expectation is that anybody could sign up for this workshop at any point in time. But the leads you wouldn't expect to come back again, week over week, right? This is where I would have an automation run, right? So that automation is going to be maybe something that is applied at the point of um, of registration. With a follow-up plan, right? So let's just say, for instance, these are workshop leads, and the workshop is actually more like a sales webinar. And you want to be, um, you know, essentially making a pitch to the people who signed up for it. You will want to have some sort of an automation that you run. Uh, maybe after you've had the live call, that applies your sales campaign, removes workshop lead tag, and applies a different tag. Right, or maybe reminds you to follow up with them, right? So it depends, right? So sometimes, yes, you do wanna remove that workshop lead tag, and that's going to be in the instances where. You don't expect or want someone to come to this call every single week. You want them to come to this call and then take another action. So that would be where you would incorporate an automation, and of course, there's. You know, the sky's the limit as to where you could go from there. It really just depends. If you would like to come out and chat through, uh, maybe how you wanna use this. I'd be happy to kind of discuss specifics with you. Definitely let me know. I know you are a little bit more of an advanced user. So we can definitely chat through that. If you'd like, let me know, just pop your hand up. Alright, great questions, you guys. Hey, Cornelia.
Yes, okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, perfect. So I was thinking about the um, 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 um. Uh, well, women-related um, vault, where I, I offer, which is a member vault, which is a paid membership, actually. Where I share the whole time, um, women-related topics, of course. But um, every now and then, of course, I want to um, pitch this uh, to, for, for new members and um. Yeah, I just think um, they're not, since that, those I pitched to, they are not. Um, supposed to get all the calls, because that is part of the membership, right? Um, and I had this question in the Facebook group, ask, because I wanted to realize or. Do this in a, in a campaign with automations, but this makes absolute more, more sense. So I would always, those who just, who just come to the pitch, um, I would remove afterwards. A specific tag ag- again.
That's right.
Talking myself, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So in, in this case, uh, maybe you would be doing an info session like this once a month, right, or, or. Right, is, is that, is that about right? Yeah, so, so once a month, and you, you would have, create the, the whole setup, like. With, with the resource uh, here. Uh, but then you're going to be setting this up in such a way that the tag that you use. Uh, is one that would be removed via an automation, but what you're gonna need to do. Is, so let's just say, you know, here's your, here's your date. Um, or your day, your day tag, right? So here's when this is happening. Um, you will, um. You'll put that into the confirmation email. Everything else is gonna be set up basically the same. Uh, but the automation that you send, you're going to, after you've had this call. Uh, you're going to filter the contacts who have the tag, and you're going to run the automation. Right, so this isn't going to be fully, fully automated, but you will run an automation on these leads. You know, uh, immediately after you've had the call, right? So that's where you're going to maybe apply the sales campaign for this vault product, uh, remove that tag. That, that was on the, the registration page, right? Uh, and then, you know, any follow-up plan that you want for yourself to be reaching out to those people. Uh, so that you can connect with them in hopes of getting them to buy. Uh, so that would be, uh, it's not something that we would attach uh, to the initial stage where they're registering, but it is one that we would set up. Um. As something that they can um, have applied to them after you've had that call.
Mm-hmm, and the automation I could put in a, in, in the. Uh, in the last message of my follow-up campaign, for example, or in the, no, actually in the first one. Anyway, I, I would say, okay, I understand the idea, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I actually, I would only apply this automation manually, so after you get off the call. Filter your contacts for the tag, and then apply the automation to them, right? Or if the, be- because, cause you wanna be able to, so for instance, right? If you're sending a reminder email out to the tagged people who registered, you wanna be able to have. Uh, that tag still on them, right? So that the system knows to send them that, hey, we're about to go live, here's the link email, right? And then you wanna, after you've been on the call. You want to have that tag removed, right? So that's just you're gonna be going in, filtering for that tag. And then running an automation on all of those tag contacts, right? And that automation's gonna remove the tag and then apply the next campaign, right?
Okay.
Okay. Does that make sense?
We, yeah, great.
Alright, good, 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 awesome. Thanks for coming out. Alright, Jolene says, uh, do you have access to a workshop detailing the automations we're talking about? You can quickly add here. Um, yeah, so we've done quite a few on our weekly work session about automations. Highly recommend that you check out the Success Academy here. Um, simply uh, go over to our live training and replays, type in automation. Uh, and then that'll give you a lot of options uh, here in our sort of library of, here we go, here's it getting started. Uh, with automations. Uh, but just to show you really quickly, so let's just say, for instance, uh, the, the use case that I was just discussing with Cornelia. We're gonna use uh, an automation here, let's create a new one. And this is going to be, um. We're gonna call this, um. Uh, we're gonna call this workshop. Lead. Or we'll call this after workshop. Sequence. It's what we do after the workshop, okay? So after workshop, I'm going to remove that tag. Remove. Workshop lead. I'm going to add. Here we go, I'm gonna add a tag, and this is going to be, um, post-workshop lead. Right, so now I can, I can search for these people in a different way. So those are people who had registered for a workshop previously. Um, and I'm gonna be following up with them in other ways. And then I'm going to maybe, because I pitched something uh, in that live call that I just did, I'm going to add my sales campaign. And I'm gonna add or restart that. And uh, just to keep things clean, I'll go ahead and remove that workshop campaign that was on them, just so it's not in that list of. Um. Campaigns that they're registered for, right? So most importantly, we're removing the workshop lead tag. We are um, adding a different tag to indicate that they signed up for one previously, but they're not registered for the one that's about to happen. Uh, and then, of course, I'm going to, in this case, Cornelia's case as well, attach that sales campaign, that's going to be. Following up and selling them on the thing uh, that I pitched on the call. Um, and again, this is just to kind of keep things neat. I'm gonna remove the campaign that had been applied to them on their initial registration, so I'm gonna add this. Automation, and then what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go find my uh, my contacts with that workshop lead tag. So let's just pretend I've just done uh, my, um, I've just done my live call, it's Wednesday. Uh, and I'm gonna do this every Wednesday, or once a month, or whatever. I'm gonna go find that workshop lead tag. I'm gonna filter. And then, under actions. I'm gonna go to um, bulk contact actions. Automations, and here's my after-workshop sequence. That's what we're going to do. You have your call. You filter for your, your contacts, so this will be your workshop leads in this case, and then we apply this automation. And so now, if we go look at this contact. They are now post-workshop lead, so the next time I email about this upcoming call, they're not going to get it. Because they've already registered for one in the past, and the campaign that they're on is now that sales campaign for the program launch. Right? Uh, and of course, again, if you wanna be following up manually, a follow-up plan could be applied, so you've got to-dos, et cetera. Hope that makes sense. Alright. Um, let me see. Does that work? Does that make sense? Let me know. Um, let me see, that's. I think everything is working for you guys. Okay, perfect. Awesome. Okay, well, I'm glad that we clarified that. We've even gotten into a more advanced use case. Uh, for those of you who are maybe not inviting uh, to every call in the sequence. Uh, so look forward to seeing how you guys use this, how it works for you, and of course, we'll be back same time next week. Let us know what you want to learn next. Head over to our Facebook group and start a conversation. Thank you guys for sharing this time with us, and we will see you next week. Take care.